All right, you got 12 seconds. I'm going to call to order this June 22 meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. This meeting is being held in the Village Building and is open to the public to attend in person. We're practicing social distancing, distancing in conformity with the governor's guidance. We're also allowing people to join us remote. To my immediate left, to the far left, is Mrs. Karen Cormack, Supervisor, District Five. To my immediate left is Mr. Larry Norvik, District Two Supervisor. To my far right, Mr. Mike Barley, District Three Supervisor. And joining us remotely from the conference room in the Village Building is District Two Supervisor, Mr. Bill Cox. Also joining us for the meeting tonight is our interim county administrator, Mr. Brett Shardine, and our county attorney, Mr. Tom Lashme. Mrs. Charlotte Schubert, our finance director, will be joining us later in the meeting as well. Brett, will you share with folks how they can join us for commenting remotely this evening?
Yes, so the setup for anybody joining remotely is the same as we've been doing for a recent past meeting. So through Zoom during either of our general public comment periods or during any one of our three public hearings we'll have tonight, hit star nine if you're on the phone to be addressed, or hit the raise hand icon if you're using the Zoom app.
Thank you, Mr. Shardine. Mr. Cox, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Mr. Norvik, would you do the invocation for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come to you tonight again to ask your blessing on this meeting. There's been a lot of negative news lately in our country and in our Commonwealth. So we want to thank you tonight for the positives. We thank you for rain and sunshine in their seasons that helps our crops here in Powhatan to grow. We thank you for the fact that Powhatan has a greater percentage of healthy people during this time of COVID. Very thankful for that. We're thankful for our law enforcement. We're thankful for our fire and rescue personnel that keep us safe. We're thankful for a school board and a board of supervisors that is trying to work a very difficult problem and is remaining professional and maintaining good working relationships. And most of all, Lord, we thank you for the sense of community in Powhatan. What a gift that is. And we just ask that you continue to watch over Powhatan County and the things we do tonight. Amen.
Do I have a request to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the oral presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cox.
I would like to add, I imagine it will be item 17, a closed session to discuss personnel matters?
Yes, sir. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have one change also.
Please.
On the consent agenda, item 7J, we have the CARES funding allocation plan on page 76 of the agenda. We also tonight have a public hearing that involves the CARES Act, and that's item 11A. So my suggestion would be to pull consent agenda item 7J if Mr. Shardine would be willing to do just a two-minute synopsis of exactly what the CARES Act categories and how that works. So the public can have information enough to make a public comment.
I think that's a good suggestion, Ms. Norvik.
All right, so I would recommend pulling, I make a motion actually, to pull 7J. And actually, that's at the chairman's, at your pleasure to put that into...
The public hearing that we're having on the CARES Fund. Mr. Shardine, are you comfortable giving us an overview that Mr. Norvik requested so that people will have benefit of that?
Yeah, I guess if, for simplicity's sake, if you just want to strike J, I can just work it into my intro on the public hearing. Because we don't, we don't need a formal vote on that and plan. We just kind of wanted the board's blessing generally, you know, whether you think that's a good idea or not. So I'll just summarize it in my intro of...
Okay. Then I would like to make the motion to strike item 7J with that understanding.
Okay. Do I have a second on Mr. Norvik's motion?
Second.
Any comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do I now have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That moves us to the next part of our agenda. Appoint Mr. Boys, Commissions, Committees. Mr. Shardine, I believe we've got somebody we need to appoint to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, you got to do your public comment.
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
We short circuited you.
I'm sorry.
You want to get us out of here tonight, don't you?
We can have two public comments at the end of the meeting.
We got you down to 7J and then you just kept going.
Okay. Ms. Cormack, thank you. Okay, I will now open our first public comment period. If you're to discuss something that we're having on the agenda later in the meeting, please wait till that time when we have the public hearing. Otherwise, come forward, give your name, your address. If you're an individual, we will allow you three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, we'll allow you five. Mr. Shardine, would you assist me in anybody that wishes to come forward remotely?
Yep, I'm looking at that now. Don't see anyone yet, but we have an in-person speaker. So if anybody online requests to be heard, I'll let you know.
Please.
Good evening. Name is Steven Barham, 3492 Richards Run, Powhatan, District Three. First, I'd like to say, glad to say that I have a representative that actually represents the district this time, Mr. Barley. Thank you. I'd like to thank all the board members up here. I know it's a tough job. Some of y'all were here last time, some of y'all were new. So thank y'all for stepping up, taking on what y'all got to take on. I don't know exactly what's on the agenda tonight, so I'll say what I got to say. I know we're getting into budget time, and that it's a tough time. I know that. We all have personal budgets. I have a personal budget. I have a household and a business budget. I know when money's tight, I have to cut my budget. I have to cut my expenses, personal. And getting into the business, it's even worse. Some of y'all up there, I think, are business people, some aren't. So please, when you go to do this budget, think about what you're doing. We heard, I think, from most of y'all that we were going to cut our tax rate or keep it the same. Assessments have gone up. So if we don't cut the tax rate, then we have a tax increase. And I can tell you, I run into a whole lot of people, I have a pile of people I talk to, and they don't want a tax increase. You know what happened to the last board when they didn't do what the people wanted? And I don't want to see that happen. But we've got a group, a good group of people up here. As far as making cuts, I know it's a tough decision. I know for the last three or four months, we've had a whole lot of county employees who have not been at work doing the job the best they can remotely. And this county has not collapsed, has exploded. I think it's run pretty good. So that tells me there are areas to be cut. I've heard some rumors about possibly cutting the Sheriff's Department. That's the last place we need to cut what's going on in this world today, especially with what we have running this state nowadays, the liberal agenda we have. I know what they're going to be sending to our police departments, what they have to do. So there's no sense in that. So please do not cut that. Now, we know everybody in this room, everybody around here knows the biggest cost of this county is the school system. Always has been, always will be. Previous board, in my opinion, majority, with the school board and school administration run this county, basically dictate how we're going, how much money we're going to spend. I know it's not your honest place to tell the school board how to spend the money. That's for them to decide. I understand what you're talking about, possibly cutting the school budget here recently. And the first thing, what I understand, if I'm wrong, correct me, that we hear is that we got to cut teachers, we got to cut people actually doing the work, and cut sports programs. Well, let's look at the administration. We've got six schools. We've got superintendent, two assistant superintendents, and their staff. I'm sorry, if one superintendent can't run six little schools, they're not big schools, and we have a problem. Y'all can't tell them how to run it, but please, guard our mother's face. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to come forward tonight? Shardine, have anybody trying to access remotely?
Do have. One citizen submitted a comment through the chat feature, so I can read that now. Lynn Chalnor, 2496 Red Lane Road, Powhatan, Virginia, 23139. Please consider establishing a tax rate of 80 cents per hundred, sorry, 84 cents per hundred. Please don't forget the additional tax money the Commonwealth of Virginia has burdened taxpayers with come July 1, 2020. I want to thank you for everything that the board does for our beautiful county. My wife and I trust the Board of Supervisors' judgment when it comes to spending our tax dollars.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Do not see anyone else at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, I will close our first public hearing. Now, going back to where I was before, we're going to talk about the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I believe we have one position that we have to fill. Mr. Norvik?
Yep, that's my district. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Board of Zoning Appeals is a very important part of this community. If someone from the public disagrees with, well, several categories that have to do with their property, we do have an appeal process. And so the Board of Zoning Appeals is very, very important. It's a good check and balance system. David Bradley has been on the Board of Zoning Appeals for some time. He's got a bachelor's degree in math. He's got a master's degree in computer science. I worked for Data General Corp., IBM Corp., et cetera. He's retired Army National Guard. He's been an assistant scout master, belongs to American Legion Post 201, which I'm happy to say I am also a member. I have not been as active because of just things going on in my personal life lately, but I hope to get back there and see him again soon. So I know David. I've spoken to him at his front door, and we've talked about some community issues in District Two. He's engaged in Powhatan County. He gives back to Powhatan, and I think he's an excellent addition to the BZA, and I'm really glad to have him. I also want to say publicly that I pledged him my support if he runs into difficulties or has questions or whatnot, that I'm there for him anytime to do whatever I can to help make his job easier. So I would like to make a motion that we approve and accept David Bradley onto the, for another term. And that would be officially moved to recommend reappointment of David Bradley to the Powhatan County Board of Zoning Appeals. That's a five-year term commencing July 1, 2020, expiring July 31, 2025.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Cox.
I don't believe we approve the consent agenda.
It's possible.
I will go back and do that.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Is this, Tom, is this one because the consent agenda contains a resolution? We need a roll call? Or is that just an ordinance?
Oh?
Yeah, it's okay. We're calling a resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sharno. We have an appointment to the Community Policy and Management Team. Brett?
Yes, we have. Kara Brooks has applied for this position on the CPMT for a two-year term.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
She's in my district.
Ms. Barley, please.
I'll be happy to make that motion to put Ms. Brooks on the Community Policy and Management Team.
I will second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, one member and a CVTA Technical Advisory Committee, TAC, and one member and an alternate. Mr. Shardine?
And this one had left it there blank, but since put the packet together and reviewing their draft bylaws, they dictate that it would be the chief elected official or the chair of the board that would hold that position. Those are just draft bylaws. They won't be official until they meet and adopt them. But that would be the chair recommended for that position. And then the TAC is a staff position. Most localities are using the same staff person that's on our TPO TAC, which would be Mr. Pompey. And then I would be happy to serve as the alternate.
Okay, any discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Norvik, please.
Brett and Andrew, are you sure you can stand the excitement down there? You sure?
New transportation money coming our way. I don't...
Okay, well, that sealed that one. Okay, just checking.
And for, you might note that we don't have an alternate for the primary position. That doesn't have to be designated officially. The chairman, if he's chosen, if he could not meet, he could just dictate somebody to attend. So we don't need one official alternate there.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to have myself as the chairman of the board be the member. And then for the Technical Advisory Committee, you're talking about Mr. Pompey, and that you would be the alternate. Somebody like to make that motion?
I move that we put Mr. Williams on the ZVTA. Do I have to make that as a separate motion from the other one with Mr. Pompey? Or can I do it? Okay. As well as putting Mr. Andrew Pompey on the TAC Committee.
And Mr. Shardine?
Mr. Shardine is the alternate.
I will second your motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we now move to the Economic Development Authority, the EDA. Mr. Shardine?
We have two vacancies coming up on June 30. Mr. Dan Jones, who has served on the EDA for some time, he has applied and is interested in reappointment. Mr. Bob Gibson is coming off of his seat and not seeking reappointment. So we would need somebody new there.
Mr. Chairman, with that, is that district specific? I know we did have another person from Five that was a while back that was interested in serving on the EDA as well. Just, it was way back when we were filling out all the things, the forms. So I just wanted to see if that was district specific, or if we wanted, if we could just fill the one and then wait on the second one?
We only have got one person that's interested tonight.
Yeah, the other one was interested, but it didn't make it into this packet. He applied way back when we were starting to do all the boards and committees back in January.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cox?
Isn't Mr. Jones is District Five, is he not?
Yes.
Yes. I'm not sure whether, Ms. Cormack, are you talking about the one where we don't currently have an application?
He is in Five as well.
For Mr. Gibson's replacement?
Yes, that's what I was saying, yeah, just to give you that.
Okay, so we're not even doing anything with that one tonight?
Correct.
So what's before us is Mr. Jones, who is on the EDA and wishes to be reappointed from District Five. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Norvik?
I have no problem with one person from each district being on it, but I guess just as a caution, first of all, there are seven members. And I think for the EDA, one, because we were on the board when we appointed, brought into being the EDA in Powhatan, I think what we're looking for there are the right mix of people who can move the economic football downfield, if you will. I really am not that interested in the EDA becoming too much of a political thing where we all have to have one person from each district. I'm comfortable with knowing that the board is appointing the most qualified, economic, savvy individuals, because we really need commercial, Powhatan-friendly, commercial revenue in Powhatan. And I just want the best seven people on that. That's just my input. I don't remember Mr. Williams, but I don't think there was any kind of informal agreement that everybody had a district or whatever, so...
Unless we add two more districts.
So, well, we can always gerrymander, I guess, but, you know. So I don't think that was a big consideration when we formed it. So I'm just kind of chipping in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. Do I have a motion tonight?
I move we reappoint Dan Jones to the EDA for another four-year term.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that moves us to Powhatan Community Action Agency Advisory Board. Mr. Shardine?
Here we have three reappointments and two new appointments.
Would you like me to make a motion?
If you would like, Ms. Cormack, please.
You have to recuse yourself because your mom is one of them, right?
That's true.
Isn't that right?
I was just trying to move it along, I swear.
I'm going to have my cousin Billy Joe Raybob be on this thing now.
Okay, you make the motion.
I am completely kidding. I'll make the motion for two of them that are in District Three. I'll make a motion that Arlene Booker and Ms. Connie Maslow be appointed or reappointed. I think they're both on there.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. I'll second that motion. Any discussion on the motion?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, if I took away from the dignity of this board during that outburst. There it is. Sorry, sir.
We'll have the lawyer look into this. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do I have any other motions?
I'll make a motion. I move we also reappoint Ms. Donna Terry, appoint, and two new appointments of Zakiya Worsham and Arlene Booker to the Powhatan Community Action Agency.
Thank you, Ms. Cormack. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the first, the first motion, or Mr. Barley, the two that you recommended were Connie Maslow and Booker Arlene. So we missed Juan Hardy in that.
So we still have one?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I missed, I did not hear you correctly.
I didn't, I didn't.
You, you didn't do one. Okay, I move we reappoint Juan Hardy to the Powhatan Community Action Agency.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Shardine. Thank you, Mrs. Cormack. Okay, we have a proclamation tonight recognizing the Powhatan Clothes Closet. Mrs. Cormack, will you help us with that?
I sure will. Let me get to the next page. Whereas the Clothes Closet of Powhatan has a long history of service to the community, providing low-cost clothing and household items to those in need, and whereas members of the Women's Club of Powhatan have volunteered countless hours to run the shop, and whereas this endeavor has benefited many members of the community by providing necessary clothing, including coats, children's wear, interview apparel, and more, and whereas the Clothes Closet of Powhatan contributed almost 100% of all monies earned to local schools, fire departments, social services, rescue squads, food pantries, the free clinic, and at least 20 more worthy causes, and whereas due to the restrictions placed on gathering places by the COVID-19 pandemic, the Clothes Closet of Powhatan can no longer fully function safely and must close permanently, and whereas the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the citizens of Powhatan County, wish to honor and recognize them for their 30-plus years of service to the community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby express its sincere appreciation to the Clothes Closet of Powhatan and its volunteers for their contribution to Powhatan County.
Are you making a motion for the approval of this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Cormack. That moves us to old business. Shardine, would you help us out with this?
Yeah, and we've got Mr. Pompey is with us this evening, planning director. He can introduce this item.
Welcome, Mr. Pompey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance number 0-2020-08, which is case number 20-01REZC, is a request by Birkenhop LLC to amend the proffer statement for three parcels located in the far eastern part of the county, southwest of the intersection of State Route 671, which is County Line Road and US Route 60 Anderson Highway. Those three tax map parcels, tax map parcel number 43-33, 43-33A, and 43-35 were rezoned in September of 2018 to light industrial I-1 with proffered conditions and Commerce Center CC with proffered conditions as part of case number 18-04-REZC. A public hearing was held on this request at the meeting on May 18, 2020 against the proffer amendment. Since the board decided to defer that particular request at the last meeting, the applicant has made some revisions to the proffered conditions. They have updated the conceptual plan to reflect the feedback received from board members at that meeting. And the second change since the last meeting is that they have voluntarily offered to make improvements to the turn lane from westbound US Route 60 into the Oak Bridge Drive, the Oak Bridge Industrial Park. So the applicant's representative is here to answer any questions you may have. But again, a public hearing was held in May, and a few changes have been made by the applicant reflecting the feedback y'all provided at that meeting.
Would the applicant's representative wish to speak, or is there any questions for the applicant's representative tonight? Mr. Norvik?
You ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In accordance with Article II, the Powhatan County zoning ordinance and public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, I move to, that we approve the request submitted by Birkenhop LLC to amend the proffer statement for tax map parcels number 43-33, 43-33A, and 43-35, case number 1804REZC, by revising proffered condition number one to reference an updated conceptual plan and adding a new proffered condition that addresses transportation improvements along US Route 60 Anderson Highway in the form of a motion.
Your second. Mr. Barley, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I just want to say thank you to all those involved in this project. I see Chris sitting out there, and Tony, I'm not sure if he's on live streaming. I've been working with these gentlemen for quite some time. You can measure it in years instead of weeks or months. And Powhatan is very, very blessed to have classic granite coming into the community. It's exactly what we need. This is a company that will make virtually no noise, no pollution. They re-circ the water that they use in the granite cutting. I've toured the plant, the current plant, myself, and the new one is going to be even more modern and updated. This is the kind of Powhatan-friendly commercial development that'll put more money in our coffers and will prevent us from having to raise taxes and yet be able to fund sheriff's office, fire and rescue, schools, et cetera. So we So we could use more like these, and thank you, gentlemen, so much for your patience with us. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. Ms. Sharnide, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nordvig.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so. Charlotte?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is one of your, your first public hearing tonight is on Resolution R. 2020-33. This is to appropriate the CARES Act money. The county received $2,537.23 in CARES Act funding from the state. It's actually federal grant money. The revenue is specifically for COVID-19-related expenses and in the response of COVID-19. These funds will need to be spent by December 30th of 2020, or it has to be returned. The resolution was published in the Powhatan today on June 10th, and this public hearing is to be in accordance with the Code of Virginia because this does exceed 1% of our fiscal year 20 budget.
Thank you, Charlotte. Brett, would you like to provide the additional information that Mr. Norvik requested earlier?
Yeah, we actually have Kurt Nellis joining us remotely. He put in the majority of the work in putting together this framework of how we might spend this money to best benefit the citizens of the county, so if it's okay, he'll join us and give a summary.
Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You can hear me okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
The information that's before you this evening in your packet outlines a basic proposal that is a cooperative effort between the Finance Department and the Emergency Management Division to manage the CARES Act funds in accordance with federal guidance dealing with federal grants. Emergency Management has considerable experience in managing multimillion-dollar types of federal grants, and it was just suggested through this proposal that EM assists the Finance Department in that operation. The, uh, the budget for the, uh, the, the breakdown of the $2 million are in several expense categories that you have before you, most specifically the forced account labor, but I think what is, is really interesting that would be interested to the board is the two specific areas that are grants to citizen support groups and economic development grants to our, to our county businesses as well besides materials, equipment, facilities, and contracts. So if, unless you have some specific questions, I'm here to answer them for you, sir.
Board members, do you have any questions from Mr. Nellis?
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Norvik.
Hi, um, thanks, Kurt, for the, uh, the rundown real quick there. So the public's going to hear generally that we just got almost $2.6 million, quote-unquote, dumped on us for COVID relief, and there's a temptation here to think that we're going to be able to spend every penny and that we'll get the money right away, and this will not affect things like November tax collection, et cetera. Can you, um, I don't know, I don't need a number, I guess, but can you just discuss how easy or how difficult it will be to spend $2.6 million almost on COVID-related emergency items? Do you have a sense?
Yes, sir. I, I don't believe that we're going to have difficulty in those particular areas. We already have expenses that we've incurred that this federal grant will be able to cover those that occurred during the months of March, April, May, and even into June. So those funds can, can be used for those, those expenses. And then, as the economic development and other, other groups actively, I guess, advertise and reach out to the community with these available grants, I think you see that those expense areas can offer up to 20, uh, act, $25,000 grants to each, each organization. And there's, there's really is no limit to the number of applicants that they can put in, but I limited to 25,000 just so that one organization can't take it all, that we could spread the wealth out amongst the groups. I, I really believe in watching what we've already expended so far and what we anticipate to expend between now and the end of the month, that I feel certain that we will be able to expend these in accordance with the federal COVID guidance.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Nellis? If not, I will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, please give your name, your address. We will allow you three minutes. If you represent a group, we will allow you five minutes. But again, assist me with anybody that wishes to opine remotely.
Okay. Not seen anybody yet. We do have, uh, one comment submitted through the Q and A, but I believe that is for the next public hearing. It relates more to the budget generally. Okay, we did have another comment submitted here that I think relates to this. Let's see. Lynn and Betty Jean Chaloner, 2496 Rendleyan Road, Powhatan, Virginia 23139. Not knowing how long the COVID-19 pandemic will go on, we must not lose sight of those who lack internet access in our county. We must figure out some way to rectify this and find out exactly how much it will cost us. This should be one of our top concerns. Internet access is not a luxury, it is a need. This problem will not disappear. And then we have Ms. Rebecca Courtwright wishing to speak.
Welcome.
Hello, um, I just wanted to call in to voice my support for fully funding the school budget for this year. I understand there's a lot of considerations.
To the next public hearing on that. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you hold your comments till we get to that public comment period?
Oh, okay. My bad.
Thank you. Don't go away. Okay, any other folks wishing to address the board?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Board, may I have a motion?
I move we approve Resolution R. 2020-33. Wait, did I do the right one? No, this is the right one.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You're the right one. I'll second your motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board. That takes us to the FY '21 budget. Brett?
Yep, Mr. Chairman. So at your previous meeting, sorry, let me get to the right page here. Was that your June 1st meeting, the board authorized staff to advertise this budget? Again, understanding as we had done with the tax rate and the school budget as well, it's more of a not-to-exceed amount, understanding that we would take the time between then and now, or then, between next week, the 29th, when you do adopt something, to work on several scenarios lesser than this, which we've continued to do. Had some recent discussions with you all about some scenarios that would be below this amount, but we are required to hold a public hearing and then have some time between now and the adoption, which would be next week. So Ms. Charlotte and I are available to answer any questions. Again, this is put in as a do-not-to-exceed amount. We're currently not recommending a budget of this full amount.
Okay, so we will be holding the public hearing tonight. I will open the public comment period now. Again, Brett, your assistance on anybody wishing to join us remotely.
Yes, so, Mrs. Courtwright?
Yes, welcome.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Welcome.
Hi, I just, I just wanted to call in and make sure that, um, the parents of Powhatan that wish to see schools fully funded are recognized at this meeting. I was reading in the Powhatan today, some of the comments made by Karen Carmack about the enrollment being decreased and the funding for schools being increased, and I thought that was a little bit disingenuous since, you know, there was $980,000 worth of savings for COVID that now might be put back into the county budget instead of the School Capital Maintenance Reserve Fund, and then maybe cuts on top of that. And I understand that we don't know what our collection rate is. I talked to Mike Byerly. We had a very good discussion about it all, and I just really feel like once we cut things out of the school budget to add them back in, it's an extra thing, and everybody's going to look at that in a different way, and we don't know what's going to happen. And fully funding the school district for this year and maybe realizing some savings because of COVID is a better route to go versus cutting it now and adding it back in later.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have one comment submitted that I'll read in. Karen Rissmeyer, 3523 Richards Run. Question is, why are we talking about starting a revenue stabilization fund when we are cutting the schools' money? Can it be voted on to have that money added to the school board's budget and do the revenue stabilization fund next year when things are back to normal?
Thank you. Brett, anyone else?
I don't see one, anyone else.
Okay. I will close the public comment period. There will be no vote tonight. That will be taking place next Monday, I believe, the 29th. Is that correct, Ms. Charlotte?
Sir.
Okay. That moves us to the FY '21 fee schedule. Mr. Sh, uh, no, that's Charlotte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, each year we have all of our department heads, as part of the budget process, go through the fee schedule for any of our fees for services and make any changes. The only, we, and we only are required to advertise if we increase, and we had two increases. One, we are going to get an increase to how much it costs us to recycle the refrigerators. They're called CFCs, white goods, and so therefore, we're increasing the fee to help cover that cost from $20 to $25. And the Senate Bill 149 was passed this session and allows the county to increase the courthouse security assessment from $10 to $20. So we have put those changes in there. All other changes were administrative, just descriptive-type changes, so those are just administrative changes. This was published in Powhatan today on June 10th and 17th, since it's ordinance, we published it twice, so it is ready for you guys to approve. Does she have any questions?
Any questions from Mrs. Schubert?
Yes, sir.
Please, Mr. Norvik.
Charlotte, I saw, when I was reading through the packet, I saw the security raise from 10 to 20.
Yes, sir.
And I think, in this current climate, I think that's a great idea. I have no problem with that at all. I did not find exactly what I was looking for when it came to the convenience center fee. Where is that in this table? I don't, oh, you don't have a copy?
I don't have it in front of me, but it's along all the convenience center fees. There's two different ones. There's one that's for white goods, CFCs. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't want to print it in.
Okay. So, because I just want.
Sometimes it's hard to see those little changes.
Yeah, I wanted to take a look at it, that's why. Okay, I'm sorry, Brett, I'm looking on 182.
Page on the right.
So that's 183.
Mine is marked 182.
Okay. No wonder I can't find it. I'm looking at fee schedules, though.
Okay, it's right there. It looks like 250 because of when it does the thing, it got marked with a zero and there's a five.
Thank you, Brett. And so I understand it's just for appliances?
It's for air conditioners, refrigerators, freezers, ice, yes.
Okay.
Anything I think where they have to take care of the freon and stuff.
Thanks. I don't know what happened to my packet, but it jumbled up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. I'll now open the public comment period. Please come forward, give your name, your address. We will allow you three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. Brett, do you see anybody wishing to join us?
No one yet.
Okay. Not seeing anyone come forward, I will close the public hearing. Board members, may I have a motion?
I move we approve ordinance O-2020-09 as presented.
I'll second that motion. Brett, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nordvig.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Okay. That concludes our public hearings for the evening. That moves us to old business. FY '21 budget discussion. Brett?
Yeah, so as we talked about at the last workshop, we met with all of you and talked about potential budget scenarios. So we will look to publish the packet for the 29th meeting on Wednesday, so if any of you all do have proposals, resolutions you would like placed in that agenda, so we can get them out for the public to view and read, and for department heads, leadership team to look at them and react to and give their comments as well, we would ask that you get us those by close of, close of business tomorrow, or work with Charlotte and I if you need some help putting them together. Again, that way we can put them in the packet at the time of publishing. Otherwise, we would have to amend the packet later, which we can do, we've done that before, but it would just give less time for the public to view those proposals.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Sharnide? Okay, that will take us to our next public comment period. I will open public comment again. Please give your name, your address. We will allow you three minutes for, as an individual. If you're representing a group, we will allow you five minutes.
We have, I, I think Kurt Nellis is meaning to give an update on COVID-19 at the end of this meeting, so I think that's why his hand is raised. We have Jamie Timberlake wishing to speak.
Welcome, Mr. Timberlake.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to follow up. I know you got a letter from the Commonwealth's Attorney, Dickie Cox, and I wanted to echo his sentiments on, we know it's a rough budget year. We know one of the first things that got cut was employee raises, but I just want to make sure we remember where we are in that plan that we started five years ago to get our employees in sync with other localities with similar jobs. We continue to battle and lose people to other localities for very small amounts of money that would make a big difference in their income and keeping them here. We spend all this money to train them and get them to the level of expertise where they serve our citizens as good as they do and as well as they do, and, and then we end up losing them somewhere else. I have one coming open in my office, and I currently have 21 applications to replace it, and not one of them, in their minimum request, will fit within what I could actually offer them to start the job as a deputy one in Powhatan County. So, you know, our employees are what have, the ones that have stayed with us and gone through these difficult times, well, here we are again, they're the first thing that gets the cut. I just hope that we can remember that when we get back to times when there is money and reward them in their salaries. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. Mr. Nellis, if you'd like to share a few comments with us about the COVID virus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just keep this really brief. I wanted to make sure that the board was still aware of the, uh, the numbers that we have in Powhatan. The county is still under a state of emergency, local emergency, and I would expect that we'll stay that way into December, which then it will come back to you with a resolution to undeclare. Currently, in the county, there are 62 total cases, and those are total cases to date. That doesn't mean that there are actually 62 cases out there right now. Currently, we're tracking 31 quarantined patients at home through the 911 system. We had four hospitalizations, and unfortunately, we've had two deaths in the county. You're not sure whether these people died at home or in a hospital. That information's not available to us at, at our level. We are continuing to purchase and build up our supply of personal protective equipment in anticipation of the different phases of opening, and this project is a joint activity between the school board or the school system and the county system in, in getting enough PPE so that we can handle both operations as we get closer to their opening. I still continue to participate in numerous state and federal conference calls to keep our situational awareness, and we'll be sending you another situation report on, in the, the 1st of, of July or so, and. And other than that, if you have any other questions, please don't ever hesitate to give me a call.
Thank you, Mr. Nellis. I will now close our second public hearing. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Charlan?
Yeah, got a few this evening. One, we got word that all five of our SmartScale applications passed through the initial pre-screening, meaning VDOT found them eligible for SmartScale. As you recall, we can only submit four of those for final consideration. And I recall during our discussions, the Village Sidewalk project was kind of the extra. So unless you all direct us, otherwise we'll apply for the other four, and we'll leave off the Village Sidewalk for now, but we'll keep looking at that one for the future. Then today, we entered our Phase Two reopening plan, so things appeared to go smoothly in the county. Also, you may have updated us on this last time, Mr. Chairman, but VDOT and our resident engineer, Mr. Bates, let us know that they were able to find the funding for the Route seven-eleven safety study, so we're currently speaking and talking with them to develop the full scope of that study and what we hope to accomplish with that. So more information will be coming on that soon. Sent you a draft resolution from the school board that they'll be considering. This would be asking the governor to allow flexibility for localities like ours in implementing their school reopening guidelines. The governor had shown some ability to do things regionally with the phase reopening with Northern Virginia, different than the rest of the states, City of Richmond, different from the rest of the states. We feel it would be in-kind wise for them to consider some flexibility locally for places like us, more rural localities that have seen a lower incidence of COVID-19. So we'll prepare that resolution and have it at your next meeting if you wish to adopt that jointly with the school board. And then last, it's just a reminder of your strategic planning workshop this Wednesday, six-thirty. Want to make the public aware, that one will be remote only again because we'll be in the conference room, which is too small to accommodate public and social distancing, so that one will be, we'll have public comment periods, but they'll only be accessible by Zoom or phone call like we have had most recently, and then we'll switch back to, hopefully permanently after that meeting, back to kind of a hybrid meetings like this. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Charla. Ms. Norvick, comments?
Just have one question from what I just heard Brett say. Is this going to be our final strategic planning meeting? Originally, I think it was, but we've had such a gap, I didn't know if we're changing things up or just saying?
I can answer that question. You know, I've talked to our facilitator. You know, we're going to use him, of course, until we complete the project.
Okay.
So.
So he'll be with us for years, then?
Well, it depends on how we do Wednesday night, but if we need another session, you know, he's amenable to staying with us to get the job done.
Obviously, we kind of lost the momentum there, but so we'll see how quickly we get it back.
Yes.
Thanks.
But thank you for bringing it forward.
That's all I had.
Mr. Byerly?
No, sir, no comments.
Mr. Cox?
No, sir, I'm fine.
Mrs. Carmack?
Would just like to encourage all of our citizens on the last rally to fill out your census forms. I think you can do it online. You can do it by the form that you got in the mail. It's very important. It affects our funding that we get from the federal government, so please be sure to fill those out.
I'd just like to recognize our fire chief, Mr. Phil Warner. For their standing job and that he did down at Founders Bridge, we were told that we had a problem with at least three fire hydrants, I believe, and citizens were quite concerned about getting that problem fixed. So the other day, I received this long epistle from one of the residents commending their standing job, our chief, and his folks did in resolving the difficulty we had down there. So, chief, thank you and your staff for getting that done. Folks are deeply appreciative of your efforts down there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I apologize. We had one other citizen trying to comment. Their name is Curtis. I thought that was Kurt Nellis when he was on there, so inadvertently skipped over them if you would like to recognize.
I think under the circumstances, being as we're meeting remotely, these things are going to happen, so I'm going to allow it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, the speaker, the name showing here is Curtis. If you wish to speak, you're on the line now.
Okay, I had to unmute, sorry.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please give your name and your address, sir.
Okay, Curtis Newton, two thousand Jews Ferry Road. I was going to comment on the budget thing, but y'all kind of cut it off pretty quickly. Y'all done a pretty good job in the past of laying a little time because some of these things take a minute, a few seconds to get going. Anyway, then I raised my hand and he's still skipping me, but anyway, I appreciate Mr. Sardam catching this. I'm glad to hear that there's no vote tonight, so I guess my main comment was going to be on the tax rate, which I'm hoping will be as close to eighty cents. We certainly don't need a sixteen percent and not even a five to eight percent. So I'll wait and comment on that next time and wish y'all a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm going to ask the county attorney to read the motion that we need to go into closed session.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following discussion consideration prospective candidates for employment, specifically county administrator, and whereas pursuant to Section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven-eight-one of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County is hereby authorized discussion of forced aid matter in closed meeting. Need that as a motion.
I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Closed session, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. That only such matters as were disclosed in a motion which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or heard or discussed in the closed meeting. Need a roll call.
Ms. Charlan, would you please call the roll?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will adjourn this meeting at eight-twelve.